We'll get started, and we will start with the roll call.
Mrs. Bulley?
Here.
Mr. Munoz?
Present.
Dr. Bonebrake?
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Present.
Dr. Schumacher?
Here.
Mr. Tatum?
Here.
Dr. Beeson?
Present.
You.
Uh, we will move next um to our executive session, so I just need a motion.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education of USD 501 recess into executive session for thirty minutes to discuss confidential personnel matters to protect the privacy of the individual employees to be discussed pursuant to the personnel exception of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The board will return to open session in the boardroom. At six oh two PM, the superintendent and executive staff are invited into executive session.
Is there a second for that motion, Dr. Bonebrake? Any discussion? Okay, we'll look for a vote.
And the vote is open. All votes are in, and the motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
I have no idea, they just said there was pasta or noodles or something.
That sounds decent.
...
Make sure nobody says it.
Okay, it is 6:02. It is our time to restart. And before we roll into Pledge of Allegiance, I do want to take a moment and take a moment of silence for one of our teachers at McClure, Ms. Charity Rynch, if we could hold her in our thoughts and prayers and her family and just take a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to our next item, which is the Pledge of Allegiance.
And we have some famous people in the audience, the Teacher Pathway scholars and family. Come on up. Can you start us with the Pledge of Allegiance? These are our future teachers. They've already received their contract four years from now. Come all the way up so they can see you. All right, right there. So great. I'm gonna put this here. All right, good stuff.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you share your names and where you're, what school you went to?
I'm Avaline Bowling and I attended Topeka High School.
And I'm Ellie Heisey and I did Topeka Virtual.
And T-Calc?
Yeah, and T-Calc.
Yeah, thank you. And you'll be hearing more from these ladies a little bit later. You all did excellent. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to the adoption of the agenda, and so I will need a motion for that.
Mr. President, I move the board adopt the agenda as presented.
And a second, Mr. Munoz? Any discussion around the agenda or questions? Okay, see none, we'll look for a vote.
And the vote is open. All votes are in and the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, and I'll turn it back over to Dr. Anderson.
It's time, and you know what? I am less prepared because I'm so used to highlights and we just had our T-Calc folks back there. Come on out. We are so excited. This is the, our favorite time of the year. So we have some national winners here and Ms. Dixon will share a little bit about the program and a little bit about these ladies and we'll give them their certificates. Stay up here because they're gonna have some questions for you. I'll turn it over to Ms. Dixon first.
Good evening. I have with me two T-Calc students who competed nationally in Orlando this past June. And they competed and we had two of our five students receive national recognition and honors. And they'll talk more about that, but Ellie placed eighth place overall in the nation in her category. And Avaline finished first in the nation with her children's book. And I will turn it over for them to talk about their experience.
So Avaline, do you want to go first and talk about what you competed in and how that went?
Sure. I competed in the preschool children's literature category with a book that I wrote and illustrated about a worm who goes to a museum, gets inspired by the paintings and then goes on her own journey to find paints for her own painting. Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds great. And then, and do you want to say what you had to do to make it to nationals? What you two had to do?
Yeah, so I, I first wrote it and started working on the illustrations. And then I had help from lots of teachers. My teacher, Ms. Kimsey from T-Calc, she helped me edit it. And then my school librarian, Mrs. Foster, helped me edit it. And then also a professor at Emporia State University. And then I competed at regionals and then state before moving on to nationals.
And as the national winner, what do you get to do with your book now?
Um, I'll be getting a publishing deal for it.
Or you've already got sequels in the wor, in the works to this book. So it's exciting that she'll get to be a published author nationally. So that's exciting. Okay, Ellie, do you want to share what you competed in in your experience?
So I competed in the lesson planning and fine arts. And I took a play. We did the Three Billy Goat Scruff and I presented it in front of a third grade class at Woodson Elementary, which I went to school at. And they each got a script and we went and we practiced it a little bit in the auditorium. And then we went to the classroom and they got to present it in front of their class. It was really fun. Researched a lot of Bloom's Taxonomy, if you know, you know. But it, it was overall a wonderful experience. I couldn't go to regionals because I had pneumonia and I was in the hospital. But they pushed me along because my video was great and, you know, I had all my paperwork for it and it was all correct. And I placed second in state and I went to nationals and placed eighth in the nation.
Ellie, this is a certificate from Topeka Public School District recognizing you for placing in the top 10 in the nation.
Thank you.
And lesson planning and delivery. We are so proud of you. School District for placing first in the nation in the children's literature category at the Educators' Rising National. We are so proud of you both.
Yeah, I'm gonna see if my board.
And do you have someone to introduce? Like you have some staff and maybe family that are here?
Avaline.
Yeah, my mom is here with me today.
Mr. Tatum, I saw your hand.
Thank you. Avaline and Ellie, wow. All I can say is wow. You, you guys are representing Topeka Public Schools across the nation and making an impact that is just absolutely commendable. You, you both have done tremendous work and it shows. I'm, I'm very proud of your, of your progress and, and the fact that you're both off to doing some, some really cool things. Avaline, I wanted to ask you, with your book, what inspired you to make a, a, or, or put together a book about a worm? And, and how long did this process take you?
Yeah, so I decided on a worm because, well, the first one, I didn't want to illustrate people.
Okay.
My little secret. But also I just wanted to make it kind of less scary. I know some children can be scared of different insects. So I wanted to make it friendlier for them. And it took me a couple of months to create the book.
Luckily, you started in August and you were tweaking it until, oh my gosh, till May.
Yeah.
And her book is amazing because it's also interactive. So it's got flips and the worm moves and all kinds of interactive features. So that's.
Of course.
You got a lot of assistance with that. Does Dr. Dobler help you with that piece of?
Yes.
And, and can we like go on Amazon and, and find your, your book? Or how, how do we, how do we acquire a copy of it?
I don't have a publishing deal yet. It hasn't been.
Uh, Mom's got it. Yeah.
Do you mind asking if I share?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I think, I think you were gonna tell us about how long it took in the entire process, writing, illustrating, till you were done from start to finish?
To get a copy.
Yeah, so I started in August and then I was working on it. When was the regional competition?
It was in November.
So the main time that I worked on it was from August to November. But then from regionals to state and state to nationals, I did a lot of editing and workshopping on it.
Fantastic. Yeah, congratulations again to both of you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bulley.
So I am assuming a lot of people are at this convention. Am I correct?
Yeah, we, we had almost 3,000 kids at nationals.
And do you have any idea how many were in your particular category?
I know that children's literature is our, is always a popular one. There were probably 200.
Nice.
In that one.
Look at you go, girl.
About 80.
Wow. And my next question is, I believe you were in Orlando?
Yeah.
So I, we had to clear that for you guys to go. We had to sign a piece of paper to say, yeah, we're paying for that. So please tell me about your experience about going to Florida and what did, what did it bring to your life?
Personally, it was wonderful. I love being by the water. I love it. Disney was great. Very crowded, very hot, but it was great. I mean, honestly, I think my favorite experience being there was being with the other students. That was my favorite part. I got to share a hotel room with two other girls and it was fantastic. I mean, we talked about things that, I mean, being in a classroom for nine months together and then being in that hotel room for four days together. I mean, I knew a lot more about them and what they want to accomplish and who they want to be and how they want to do it. I've learned more about them in that than I did over the nine months.
I created some friendships, correct?
Yes, 100%.
Yes. And how about you?
Yeah, so Florida was a really great experience. It was really fun. Just getting to strengthen the bond between all of us that went down there. And then it was really cool just to see how many people are interested in becoming educators. Everyone had a confidence. And then the different breakout sessions were very informative and fun.
And either one of you was at the first time on an airline?
No.
No, so that's for some of them, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two other students, I had to sit next to them. They were really scared.
And, and hold their hands.
Yeah.
We are so glad that you got so much out of all of it. But we're even more happy that you have signed a contract that you might possibly come back to us and be educators in our district. And as you know, you worked with several educators to get you to where you are. You know how great our, our staff is. They are remarkable. So we would love to have you join us when you have completed. Oh, which colleges are you going to?
I'm going to Emporia State University. I'm majoring in elementary education and minoring in arts. And my first day of classes is August 18.
How about you?
I just finished my junior year, so I'm doing all day at T-Calc for the Teaching Pathway for my senior year. And then hopefully either going to Ha School or Washburn University.
We're so excited for both of you. You're the type of students that we like to brag about. We always tell people, we got the best students and you guys are just an example of that. So we really appreciate all your efforts and are so proud of you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank your staff for getting you there and to that point and, and getting to the top of the nation. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Dr. Bonebrake, I think.
Thank you. Two very impressive young ladies and to compete and win awards at national level. I just hope Avaline, you don't get sidetracked and just become an author. And Ellie, get, you know, sidetracked in AI, IT and never be teaching. So I, I, I'm holding my breath. I hope we can keep you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I think we'll say thank you. I am lucky enough to have seen this book months ago and I hope to be able to purchase some books for professional use. I'm gonna hold Avaline's mom to it. But congratulations, Avaline and Ellie. It's very exciting that you did so well in your junior year and will be able to continue to do even better next year, hopefully. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I believe T-Calc staff, Ms. Nichols and Ms. Slough from the Virtual School are both here in support of their students. Can we take a couple of minutes for a photo? All right, T-Calc staff and Ms. Slough, if you'd like to come forward. I'm sorry, and Dr., I didn't even see Mr. Dick was sitting over there in the corner. And Mr. Dick and Dr. Grimes. All right, come one up.
They didn't sit with us.
That's. Sit with their people.
Yeah.
All right, ladies, you all stand right there and then hold, turn your certificates around and the board will crowd around you. You want to say anything about the Teacher Pathway or anything? That's in the highlight. Is this nothing, isn't it something new about us? Is there something new about the Teacher Pathway?
Yeah, this year. Friendship.
All right, as you take your seats, that's the end of the highlight. Mr. Dick and Ms. Nichols, real quick, we'll remind you that the Teacher Pathway will expand. It'll be a little different this year. We're excited about that. Ms. Kimsey wasn't here because she Ms. Kimsey wasn't here because she retired, but I'm sure she's watching online. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dick. He's going to give a little 30 second kind of overview, uh, between him and, uh, Ms. Nichols. And then, uh, those are all the highlights for this evening. We'll turn it over to you.
I'll do the 30 second one and Ms. Nichols can do a longer one if you want. So. So just a reminder that this is moving into now a, an apprenticeship program, uh, through KSD and the school district and with, uh, Washburn and Washburn Tech. And so those students, Ellie is one of them, will be there full time as basically as student at Washburn University and TCALC to finish and get an associate's degree in elementary education and move on forward into the Teaching Pathway from there. So, uh, that is new this year and will start, uh, next week. And I don't know if Ms. Nichols wants to add anything to that. We do have a new teacher for the pathway as well since Ms. Kimsey retired and Dr. Dixon is moving into a full-time role within the district.
Nick, would you want to add to that? Friday, the 15th of August, at 9:30, we're going to have a little commitment ceremony for these guys and celebrate. Dr. Anderson's going to speak. Dr. Watson's going to stop by. So come, if you're available, I'm sure I can send that to somebody who can share it with you so you don't forget. But we're really excited to get the program kind of kicked off and celebrate the kids making that commitment. Friday, the 15th, yep, 9:30 at TCALC.
It's the only in the region program?
Yes, yeah, so we will, I will help, uh, KSD kind of lead a little cohort group of other schools who are interested in launching this program next school year. Uh, so we start that in a couple of weeks and just kind of working through. They're living vicariously through us is what they told me they wanted to do. So we're going to figure out all the nuances and hopefully other folks will kind of replicate it down the road. So we have more teachers.
So go. To pick up all the schools leading the way. I'll be the only program in the region.
That's great. Uh, Ms. Bulley, do you have a, okay, that's a thank you point. No, you have a question? Nope, that's a thank you point. Moving on. No, just, yes, Ms. Bulley.
So the apprenticeship, could you give me an overview of what that looks like for our students? Are they standing in a classroom by themselves? Are they with, uh, another teacher? It looks like a student-teacher situation.
Yep, probably I would say student-teacher, para-educator kind of cross. So the first semester will probably be more observation and background support. And then we hope, we don't know, right? Because we're still kind of figuring it out. But they will eventually do some small group and maybe some whole group instruction. Especially by the end of two years, we really want to push them out into that. So if you think about your first two years in your bachelor's program, pre-service, that's kind of the goal, to get them some of those experiences, um, just in our schools and then keep them. Yeah.
And how many are we going to have out in our school buildings?
We have 21 students enrolled in the program right now. So the, the goal is all of them will be out after Labor Day in some placement. Ms. Sharp and I were just kind of starting down that road today. Cause we'll hire them technically as a district employee and have them working for us. So.
And what does that look like exactly? Or are we still figuring that out too?
No.
Do they, like insurance?
They'll get an hourly, oh, apprentices fall kind of under a little different deal. We have adult teacher apprentices now, right, that we treat as teachers or they're kind of a co-teacher. It'll be very similar. So they'll get an hourly rate, um, and they'll, yeah, I don't, I don't think benefits. I don't know. We've never, nobody's ever asked me that question, Ms. Bulley. But no, they'll be part-time. They won't get, I don't, I'm not sure they'll even get 20 hours a week. It'll be probably close to 15.
But the idea is that you have young people that are being compensated as apprentices, which is a job, um, for going to school and earning your degree in teaching. We're excited. We're really excited.
And, and even if this is their first year enrollment in TCALC, they go through this program?
Yeah, the goal is to start them at the beginning of their junior year. So by the end of their senior year, they've checked off every graduation requirement and met the associate's degree requirements in two years. So Ellie will actually have to take a science class online that's not a Washburn class because she's just got something left to finish up. But after that, hopefully they'll move through in cohorts and, and complete all of their core and education courses.
And they do this along with their, uh, high school classes as well?
They won't have any high school classes.
Double?
Nope. So Washburn will send us a professor to teach government at the collegiate schedule syllabus. Uh, and then we'll kind of back count that as their gra, their government class for their graduation requirement.
For T-Hive, for example.
Yep. Kind of like the early college program we do now. They go take classes there. We transcript it as their requirements. So it's a similar system.
You know, we encourage
Very exciting.
One-to-one should probably be at TCALC to learn a little bit more about the program, to meet the other, uh, young people. In addition to next Friday being there to, to just get a chance to talk to the young people, especially as a retired educator. So maybe we'll make that our next one-to-one, Ms. Bulley, as well.
Thank you so much. It's so exciting. I'm very excited about all of this.
Dr. Beeson.
Getting teachers to the classroom and in, into our system. How wonderful.
I think Dr. Beeson maybe had a question.
Some of my question was answered. So it's, it's sort of a dual credit situation. Um, and then I remember we talked about this in a previous meeting, but we are, are we, we're somehow funding the credit as well, right? So the students are not paying out of pocket or very little.
They're paying nothing.
Yeah.
Because we're a registered apprentice. So the district is the apprentice host or owner.
Okay.
So we got all of that approved just actually a month ago, finally, the last little hurdle.
Yeah.
So they, we can draw down some funds to pay their tuition through the Department of Labor.
Okay. I think, I just think that's so incredible that we're automatically cutting students', potential student debt in half. And I know firsthand paying off your student loans as a teacher is really hard work.
Washburn made a significant tuition reduction.
I'm glad to hear that. Yeah, I would think so. Um, I had another question, but I'm not sure that I know what it is. So you can cut me off.
Okay, sounds good.
Like another one-on-one that's, uh, with the team, but we don't want to gloss over this piece of how we got here. Um, so we thank the two of them.
Yeah.
They're doing an incredible job with creating some new pathways as we look creatively at how do we fill the teacher shortage? And then, uh, with Dr. Grimes and Miss Luck, it is the first virtual student, uh, that's gone to Nationals, that's participated. It's pretty incredible to see that happening as well. So a lot of good things happening behind the scenes. Thank you.
Thank you. I kind of want Ellie to come back and, uh, report back next, not right now, a year, a year from now on, after you win again at Nationals on how this next year. I, I hold you to it. I may not be here, but I don't win reelection. Uh, but yeah, so I, I think, I think you weren't called on. Uh, I think that, uh, I think it'll be good for this program to, to see how things went. So thank you very much. And we'll move to public communications. Okay. Um, and then we are ready for business by consent.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the items of business by consent as presented and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
Is there a second? Dr. Beeson, any discussion? Dr. Bonebrake.
Uh, special thanks to Mr. Bucy for contributing some significant instruments. Did you play both of those?
Um, no, no, I did not. My, uh, I was just telling Mr. Munoz this story. My, my father-in-law taught in the district for almost, uh, 30 years as, and my mother-in-law was a para. Uh, he was an elementary band, band teacher out of all things, the patience, uh, that I, that I never have, will have. Um, but no, he, he passed away several years ago and she, she has gone into, you know, a, a home and, and um, isn't in a good place. So she, we, we did, um, talk about that and she wanted them to go to a good home. So those are actually going to be held back for music, music education majors. Uh, Mr. Reynolds said, you know, they're, they're, they're very nice instruments, a little bit better than what they would normally rent. So he, he wanted them to, to be used by those, which is the perfect place for them.
Just don't want them to be lost.
Yeah.
Those are great instruments.
Yeah, thank you. Other discussion? If there's none, we'll look for a vote. It looks like it's open.
All votes are in and the motion carries unanimous.
Okay, and then I'll give it back to Dr. Anderson.
All right, it says superintendent's updates, but the only update is the first day of school starts on Tuesday for our K six and nine. And on Wednesday for our K through, the rest of everyone else, K through 12. We're excited about that. And at this time, we're going to turn it over to Ms. Kramer, who's coming to the, um, microphone to talk about the needs assessment. So Dr. Bonebrake, you said, man, that was fast last time. And that was because it was part one. And we broke it up into two different nights. And so Ms. Kramer will pick up with part two of that presentation. Ms. Kramer?
Yes, and I'm going to make it really, really fast. So my presentation to you is, hopefully you've had a chance to dig into it a little bit. And I'm wondering if you have any questions that I can answer for you tonight.
Dr. Bonebrake.
Well, as you know, the first thing that goes vision and I forget what the second was. So I'm wondering what the acronyms SES and KAP actually, what are the words?
So SES is socio-economic status, and I'm sorry, I didn't hear the other one.
KAP.
KAP is our Kansas Assessment Program. And you will note too, hopefully, one of the tabs in the assessment this time, because of that very reason, as we do a lot of acronym, acronyms in education, there is a dictionary of terms for you. So if there's anything else that you're wondering about, uh, those two are in there. And if there's anything else I need to add, let me know.
Well, the range of SES, what is the range? Is it one to two or what?
Lowest is like 1.56 and the lowest is like 1.1. For socio-economic status?
Yeah.
I'm going to have to defer to Dr. Kip.
Can you repeat the question again, Dr. Bonebrake, as Dr. Kip comes up?
The, the range of the number, I think, is
Special needs.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So the special needs index for the public, you want to remind us
Sure.
what that is for the public and then share that range?
Uh, just to clarify your first part, SES just ranges from zero to 100%. And as a district, we're about 75% low SES. The special needs index is an amalgamation of, uh, homelessness, uh, socio-economic status, ELL, special ed, mobility. And so all that comes together to produce an index.
It's all equal weighting?
Equal weighting. Mm-hmm. So each school is weighted the same way, um, along those, all, all those, uh, components. And so it's additive. So you have, if you have a high needs, it's really a resource allocation to where some of the schools on the higher end, like Quincy or Loman Hill, you know, that's special needs because of all those additional resources we have to put in.
So the lowest is what?
Zero. And it can go all the way up. I mean, it could go to like one point. Uh, it could go up to 2.0. We've never seen it that high, but zero to two is generally how it works. Okay?
Thank you.
And Dr. Kip, I believe you created that, didn't you? Isn't that, Dr. Kip, um, designed that assessment for us?
Other questions? Dr. Beeson.
It's not really a question tonight. So we've scheduled retreats in the past. This is something I'd be really interested in diving into more. There's just so much information and it seems so important, important. I would really like to understand it in more, in more depth. So just a suggestion.
For the needs assessment?
Yeah.
So noted.
Ms. Bulley.
So every year we get the needs assessment and every building creates their document for what they believe their needs are and what they want to put in place for their students. Are we tracking their strategies and seeing if they're making a difference? And are we knowing if we should keep the strategies that they are, are putting in place?
Yes, and I'll let Mrs. Wallace speak to that.
So, yes, each of our schools has a school improvement plan that is documented in Kansas Star. It includes a parent engagement, um, plan. Uh, it includes an after-school programming, a professional development plan. And then it includes SMART goals and action steps that that school will work together collectively to meet those goals.
And so the individual programs they put in place, for instance, Walk to Learn or Interventionist. Are we keeping data on those strategies and are they really making a difference in each of the buildings?
Well, the data is, well, the ultimate data is student achievement data to see if we're moving the needle in, in that direction. Um, it is hard sometimes to put a quantitative measure when there are so many different strategies in place. Um, but they are working to isolate and look at what is most effective.
I think that would be the most powerful for our district to figure out what is the most effective in each of those school, school buildings. Instead of keep doing the same thing that maybe not be helpful. Correct?
Dr. Bonebrake.
It just seems like we just keep banging our head on the wall. There's chronic truancy, uh, absenteeism, uh, parents or parent moving the family from one home to another and therefore resulting in another different school. And the student has to get acclimated to a new environment. I would like to see somehow we can keep those students that move going to the same school. Our transportation needs are disgusting. They're ridiculous. And somehow get these children to appreciate school, to enjoy the options of what they can obtain. And maybe with the weapons of mass distraction out of the schools, it'll be better and they'll enjoy school more and meeting their contemporaries. But we need to be able to get these children to their original school and not transported somewhere else to an entirely weird environment to them.
And you know, Dr. Bonebrake, I think you brought this up last year as well in terms of wanting to see more students who, uh, might transition for challenges in their life, being able to stay at the same school. Maybe even been a parent or something that connected with you. So Dr. Kip, can you speak to, uh, how often we do that since we are doing that more and more, uh, in terms of transportation? And, uh, if Chief is around and in earshot and wants to speak to that. But Dr. Kip can share how many of those kinds of, uh, adjustments he is making this year, sir?
Yes. Actually, in your packets, when you look at the special needs index, you'll see a column called Mobility. The, the difference between our district and more, uh, affluent districts is, uh, mobility kind of follows the contours of poverty. So I'll give you a prime example, Timberly Apartments. They just shut those down all. We had 60-something kids that just had to up and move. So new homeschool, new everything. We have a lot of families that, that I deal with that are struggling to find affordable housing in this city. So they're moving around. So I, I love the idea of a homeschool and that kind of community. But there are some challenges that our families have that make it somewhat difficult for them. That coupled with, you know, we have class size ratios at certain buildings. And we have to maintain that, um, class, uh, student-to-teacher ratios. And so sometimes schools fill up relatively quick. And board policy is that if a school is full, we find a neighboring school and transport them that way. So hopefully that sheds some light on, we can go on another hour about that.
And Dr. Kip, let me ask, because in the cases where schools not full and they register early and they've had a change such as the apartments that closed, uh, or a babysitter is now on this side of town rather than that, do we accommodate for that?
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, we always try to do what's best for the family in terms of their, you know, I get a lot of fa, I go to work at 5:00 AM. Um, my aunt lives over here. She can take the kids to school. So there's all these little exceptions that we typically do, just what's ever best for kids. Um, and that may require them to go to another school that's not near their address. Um, I did want to touch on the point about, uh, achievement that Ms. Bulley brought up. Um, you know, cap assessments, state assessments aren't the ultimate measure of, of progress. One thing that we do is the MAP assessments. We do those three times a year. And one thing that's important to distinguish is achievement versus growth. A lot of our kids, a lot of our schools, Loman Hill has shown incredible growth. Now, are they at that magical mark of proficiency? No. But you got kids that are growing incredible amounts from the fall to the spring. That doesn't really get counted. It doesn't get, you know, the state doesn't recognize that. But there are some incredible things going on in some really challenging high-poverty schools. So I just wanted to answer your question in terms of what data we're tracking. We track growth tremendously close. Okay?
And, and we're keeping track of the programs that they have in those schools that could be creating that growth.
Absolutely.
Sharing those.
Ms. Wallace.
I know some things that happen in one school building may not transfer well into another, but there has to be some parts of that that will.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think they pilot test certain things in certain buildings. And then, yeah, like the Strive program at Whitson, I think has done incredible things for kids with autism. Yeah.
And through teaching and learning, it's shared and through the school improvement process. I saw Chief came in on the tail end of that transportation comment. So just to note, Dr. Bonebrake, as we wrap that answer up and as Chief comes to that microphone, very briefly, the adjustments that we've made are things that include within the parameters, if we have room at a school and a parent enrolls early, but they've had some change in their life and there's room at that school, then we're doing what we can to make the adjustments and to allow them to stay. Which does mean, Chief, you're transporting students sometimes from one community to the next, which is what he's asking us to do when there are challenges or babysitters or things in other neighborhoods. Am I correct in that, sir?
Yeah, what we look at first is if they went, the kids dropped off at a babysitter, first they have to qualify for busing themselves. And once they qualify for busing, then that daycare or provider also has to be within the boundaries of that school. And that's how we kind of determine that busing. As Dr. Kip pointed out, there are always exceptions that we look at. And then what we look at is, is there, do we have a bus? Or does Kansas Central have a bus that's going by that location or close to that location? And then we can figure out if we do, then we can get them routed that way too. So there's a lot of things that we look at. You know, we have the blanket 1.75 boundaries and all that other stuff. And then, of course, you always have to look at the exceptions. Am I 1.74 miles away, you know? And we have a bus that goes right by there? Then, yeah, we'll probably go ahead and route that.
Now, you should know this year already, we have 50 homeless students living at the shelter as of today already. So, you know, that's another area of a challenge and opportunity is we, through McKinney-Bento, accommodate those young people to remain at their school despite their change in their living situation. So we're doing all we can to accommodate young people. And we thank you for bringing that up in the past and continuing to bring that up.
Mr. Tatum.
My question was actually for Dr. Kip. I, I believe more than, than anyone else. Dr. Kip, I, I'm absolutely fascinated by the distinguishing between elements that indicate growth and, and ones that indicate achievement. And I really want to kind of double down on, on what Dr. Beeson said earlier in her request for maybe delving into the needs assessment a little bit more. But it certainly sounds like you've done some, some work to kind of support the needs assessment in some ways that board members may not really be aware of. So i- if, if it's, if it's possible to, to kind of dovetail that into whenever we, we might have a retreat to talk on a deeper level about these concepts, I think that would be fascinating. Particularly if you've created your own index for, for statistical measurement. I can't remember what it was called, went from zero to two?
Special needs index.
The special, okay, that's what I'm looking at right now. Maybe you can answer this question now because I'm, I'm, I'm really curious about it. Given that, that you created it, what is the significance of the special needs index in terms of how it provides information on the needs assessment that's useful for the legislature? Because they're the ones that are asking for, for this data. And is it, is it applicable in other areas too? Like of information that the State Department of Education's asking for?
Well, since the inception of the, the needs assessment and the statute requiring boards to review all that, we've actually started doing the, our own needs assessment in terms of the special needs index. We, we did that, I think, Mr. Menke, probably 10 years before the statute came out. The special needs index, I don't want to speak for Mr. Menke, but I believe it helps him drive resource allocation. Where, where are funds needed? Where, you know, per pupil spending? We're basically using those funds in a, in a strategic and appropriate direction based on the demographics and the needs of those children.
Okay.
You, anything to add, Mr. Menke?
What Dr. Kip said is, he and I, Dr. Kip, again, created and I used a long time before the folks at the state thought it was necessary to do this document. And the interesting thing to me with his data and approach is from the very first time you and I kind of worked on this, it is interesting how our resources align with the special needs index. I mean, there's no magic, right? I mean, it, the, the resources go where the most difficult to, to learn environments are. So I, I would just say the correlation is, is, is highly correlated with his special needs index and the resources. If you would look at a capital city and, and look at that special need in, needs index and his, yeah, ratio of zero to two, you'll see those schools where, where that SNI is, is 1.5 or above are, are historically the schools on the, on the ESA data report where we line up buildings, kids, and what's it cost per kid? And we break that down by federal, state. You'll see those are, are, are more than generally the buildings that we allocate higher, higher resources to.
All right. Thank you. Gentlemen, I could, I could nerd out on this all, all day. So thank you, thank you both. And, and to you, Ms. Kramer.
Thank you. And just to add to that too, part of the needs assessment is identifying barriers. And so for me, that special needs assessment helps me illustrate that to you by putting the mobility rate and things like that. That, you know, the state might not require that, but it helps us understand that that is a barrier to be addressed. And then, Mrs. Bulley, also to add on to Mrs. Wallace's explanation, we also use our CI3T programming, which we are doubling down on this year to make sure that we made that clear, that it's part of our school improvement process. We have identified strategies that are evidence-based. So that is in our school improvement implementation manual that all buildings have. And then students who need extra support, most often their support is documented through a GEI plan. So we absolutely keep track of their data. We make sure that they're making progress. And if perhaps Wilson's not working, we switch to SUNDAY. But they're all evidence-based programs intentionally. So I hope that helps.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Bonebrake.
Thank you. Do we know if extending the school year for our two lowest performing schools was of any benefit? Started two summers ago and then they extended through June this summer too. But do we assess that or how can we?
I think that Dr. Gardner is working on that assessment. That's part of his study.
So as we continue to look at growth, as Dr. Kip mentioned, our CAP, our MAP data is showing growth in areas. But across the board, you know, the more time we have, that's one year of data. When we have that three to five-year opportunity, we'll get a chance to see that growth from kindergarten on up. But this very first year, we've seen not only qualitative data, like higher retention of staff, improved morale, some of those areas. But we also see data in terms of just increase in the growth of students' learning, particularly in their literacy. Ms. Sharp, in terms of growth at Ross specifically, anything that you'd like to mention in terms of the early childhood or the elementary level and their, and the areas that seem to have the greatest growth over the past year?
Yes. They have seen growth in their MAP and CAP scores. I'll tell you, their primary grade levels, K through 2, really honing in specifically on the small group reading instruction, using those evidence-based resources. They've spent a lot of time working on building staff capacity and experts at different grade levels where this teacher is really good at Let's Play Learn. This teacher focuses on SUNDAY. So they're trying to build the skillset of teachers to effectively use their resources that teaching and learning has provided. So we are seeing progress. It's going to take some time to continue that, you know, up and through the Ross Eisenhower campus. But they're doing good things. Yes.
Yeah, the other, it has grown, the summer program. So we now have, first of all, more teachers that stayed for the summer program for the extended school year. And then more students came this year and, and, and remained the entire time for the academic program. So that was an exciting piece. So even that grew. It started very small last year. So we're looking forward to what's to come. And then Scott as well, which had the extended school year, they also had tremendous growth under Dr. Gorsuch. They had growth under Dr. Mejia, but as they've extended the year, again, we're talking the first year of summer programming. But they also had tremendous growth. Ms. Sharp, did you want to speak to that at all regarding the levels at Scott? But that pretty much is across the board at Scott, at every grade level?
Yes, they are showing progress. Excited to look at their data this fall and be able to compare, to see what impact that summer program had.
Now, remember, we're talking about MAP for us. CAP is not going to be out until October.
Mr. Munoz.
It's great to hear that everything we do is sort of baked back by data, you know? And my question is more about the process. Do principals and schools work on their own sort of improvement plan? Or is there space for schools to work with each other? You know, oh, you know, the elementary, middle. I just, sometimes when you think of that, that might sort of, might be helpful. Tell me about the process, could you?
So schools collectively have a building leadership team that starts with their building plan. But we, throughout the entire year, principal meetings and other opportunities, Dr. Anderson gives building leaders to share and plan and work together. I know we have met in strands. So oftentimes, the Eastside schools and the principals will get together to plan and work collectively. And because they had, they had those kids who are vertically aligned that are going to end up going to Eisenhower and to Highland Park. And so they work collectively to ensure that they have a common plan between the schools.
That was what I was hoping to hear. I mean, we'd heard it previously in other meetings. So just this idea that all of them are part of a team, right? We're just got to work together and collaborating. The more that we can do that, the better our kids will be off. So thank you all.
Other questions or?
That concludes the information we have for you this evening.
Thank you very much. So I think that is it for tonight.
It is. Dr. Gray has slipped us the first day of school assignments for each of you. If you want to change those, let Dr. Gray know this evening. I think he's coming around to give those to each of you as well. So again, if you'd like to adjust those, please let us know. A member of the leadership team and communications will be at your various sites to help get photos of you interacting with your young people and learning about schools. And we're excited about the very first day.
Thank you. So we'll move into comments and we'll start with Dr. Bonebrake. Dr. Bonebrake, turn your microphone on.
None of my committees, Matt. They're all next week. That'll be fun. Convocation was wonderful. One thing that hasn't been addressed was with our needs assessment. And it stood out in our survey was that the staff are not happy and that they can't do what's best for the students. So I, I didn't see that addressed in the needs assessment. That's all I had.
Thank you, Dr. Bonebrake. Dr. Beeson?
Uh, my committee also meets next week, so I don't have anything to report on. Health Committee. Convocation is so special. I had a great time. The business partners were amazing. I wanted to acknowledge Advisors Excel. Lewis Toyota gave $2,500 in school donations and KU and K-State tickets. Sonic said they gave $2,000 drink gift cards, which was amazing. We had a, is Lane going into seventh?
Lane's going to be eighth grade.
Lane delivered an address to all staff, a college prep student. And he was incredible. The oratory skills of some of these students is really amazing. And then the Highland Park student, I did not catch his name, who sang the National Anthem. Holy moly. I had, I had goosebumps the whole time. He needs to be at all the things, singing all the things. Next week's school starts. I know in my household, it's nerves and excitement. And I just want to remind teachers, I know that feeling too as a teacher. It's nerves and it's excitement. And just a reminder of just how important everybody who works in our schools is and what a, what a difference you make for kids, even when you don't feel like it or forget. Also, so many teachers have just seen like in social media and stuff, the things they've done over the summer to continue to improve their practice and work in their classrooms. And it's just always really impressive. I know our maintenance staff are working hard to get schools ready. I think that's about it. Just excited for another school year and welcome to all new staff. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beeson. Ms. Bulley.
Since our last meeting, we had a tech, technology committee meeting. And we talked about our Chromebooks and the repair rate is a little high. We need to start figuring out how to emphasize that this is not their property and they need to take care of it. Because it is creating, you know, a lot of workload for our IT staff. And we have to try to figure that piece out. We have decided to go with Rocket League for our esports. There was some board oversight on that. We were able to give feedback on each individual game that is within that package. And so it was a yes or no, or thumbs up or thumbs down. And so that has been looked at. We had small clips of it that we were able to view pieces of the game and decided if that was a game we wanted our students to compete around or be exposed to at a school level. We still need coaches. So I'm hoping coaches will step forward to, to be part of this esports or we won't have an esports. So I'm hoping that we'll have some people who are interested in looking at that addendum. And once, once we get it in place, I think, I think we're still kind of working on that. But we do need you to help. Some students that may not do any other activity would maybe come in and do this esports and connect them to our schools. Head Start turned in their paperwork for their grant. It's turned in. So now we're just sort of hanging on. The staff at Sheldon just did a remarkable job following all the new rules. And so now it's just a waiting game. But it should be a good outcome at the end. It's going to be a really good grant for us. We also, as we saw in our board docs today, is that we have very few classes that have long-term subs this year. This is a huge celebration. It's been like five years that we have been dealing with that. And I think we're down to less than 20. I can't remember the number, I'm sorry. But hardly any long-term subs to cover classes. We have people in place. So bravo to our HR department. The legislative committee at KSB will be beginning tomorrow with our orientation. And then the weekend after that, we will be meeting to decide what are important spots we want our lobbyists at KSB to, to testify for and stand for and work toward. And so I'm asking my board, within the, by the time we have our next meeting, or even before, if you'll contact me with any concerns you have about school education, funding, special ed funding, that you get that to me so that I can take that to the committee and it'll be hashed over there if it'll be part of. But any of your input would be wonderful. Comments? So I just wanted to be, I'm just so excited about seeing everybody come back and seeing the smiles on the face that that helped Topeka Public School staff of all staff, all people feel like it was a big family yesterday. And that is just, you know, the way we want to start our year and hopefully keep them feeling that same way. They are our work family. Without them, our job would not be accomplished. So I'm hoping that they feel that same expression of work family all year long. I also wanted to make some comments about the a needs assessment. A lot of times we look at that Level One, and we see numbers on Level One. But I want to say like at Lomond Hill, 65.08% of our students are successful in that building. They are at grade level or above. At McCarter, 65.37 are at grade level or above. Ross, 42.88, one of our most most challenged schools. 42.88% of our students are at grade level and above. And State Street, 60.7, 07, I probably should have written, or 70, are at grade level or above. These are celebration points. I know they're not where we want them to be, but we're working so hard. I remember looking at needs assessments when our numbers weren't that close, weren't that successful. And so we are moving forward. And I just want to congratulate all those buildings for their hard work because we are making it happen for a lot of our students, and we are still working hard to figure out how to make it happen for all of our students. So kudos to them.
Thank you, Ms. Bulley. Mr. Tatum.
Well, see, I think the only committee that I have had since we met last is Policy Committee. And one of the primary things that we focus on in Policy Committee was looking at policies that that have to do with communication between the district and parents when it comes to student information. And I think Mrs. Whiteman is is going to kind of do an overhaul of those policies, and then we'll revisit them again. And of course, you guys will will see them and get to absorb them so that we can ratify them at some point over the the course of the near future. I also am just really excited about school starting. Convocation yesterday is really the kickoff, and we had a great convocation. And I am looking forward to my first day school assignments. That's one of the 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 milestones for me in terms of really getting the school year into off to a a great start. And I I want to, I want to give a special shout out to Principal Amy Wagner over at Landon Middle School because today, my youngest daughter Madison, who's changing schools this year, she was at French. Now she'll be at Landon. And Mrs. Wagner took some time out of her day to walk us through and help Madison get acclimated to the environment and to know where everything was, to know where her classes were, what the routine was. And so Madison went from really, really nervous, I mean, just like, you know, a basket of nerves when we started to at the very end saying, I got this. This is going to be so great. I'm looking forward to this. So Mrs. Wagner was absolutely a rock star today. Really appreciated what she did to help Madison feel very comfortable and and help. And I know that that there's also some things that that Principal Wagner has done that she'll be implementing at Landon Middle School. She has a special education background, so she's really wanting to do some things to make the entire school environment an inclusive one. So she's experimenting with some things. I am very eager to hear how they go, how they play out because I I'm pretty excited about some of the things that she shared with me regarding those those objectives. Lastly, I'm I'm also really excited about the enrollment numbers that we've seen so far for the district. If I remember correctly, last I saw it was the our our elementary schools are at 97% capacity. Middle schools are at 99, and high schools are at 101%. That is fantastic. That's phenomenal, exactly what we want to see. We may see those figures tick up another point or two as we go forward into the school year. But just want to say just how how grateful that I am. We've got great professionals working to support our students. And that is probably why our our enrollment numbers are increasing because people are choosing Topeka Public Schools, and that is a a fantastic achievement. So kudos to everybody involved in making that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. Mr. Munoz.
A couple of things just from Policy Committee with Mr. Tatum and Ms. Schmidt was we went over a couple of adjustments to our graduation policy. You all may know that the State Board of Education makes made some changes, did away with the requirement of the of doing applying for FAFSA. And so a couple of other things, as well as some of our internal graduation requirements. So we're fine tuning that, and we'll have that for your review here sometime soon. And also, speaking of of great staff, I just want to thank and acknowledge the the hard work, not for us to to implement and to work through an updated sort of cell phone policy, but for the staff, you know, who it's it's incumbent upon them to sort of implement that. And we're asking a lot of them. And so just one, recognizing the hard work that they have in front of them. What I'll do is obviously for for the right reason, which is to make sure the students are are doing well, that they're emotionally better, and and that our our staff have an easier time to be able to do their job effectively. So we we recognize the 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 big ask that we're asking. Obviously, it's going to take some time, but it's it's important to do that. So thank you all for the staff who've been working hard to sort of communicate that to staff as well as to parents and students, but also to those who are going to sort of enact that over the course of the next couple of weeks and months this year. And then the other thing was, I think that's it. I'm going to be visiting Eisenhower as well as Williams Elementary and looking forward to that.
Thank you, Ms. Munoz. Ms. Schmidt.
My Policy Committee and Technology Committee, we're already covered. Health Committee doesn't meet till next week. I just want to welcome all our teachers. I, as I say every year at this time, I always love school. I loved buying school supplies. I loved getting organized. I loved coming back and coming to class. I consider myself a lifelong learner. So I appreciate all the work that teachers are doing to prepare for our students and their families. I appreciate what the leadership in this room has done all summer long. While a lot of teachers get to go take breaks, a lot of you guys are working every day to make sure that you're ready when it's time for the teachers and their staff to come back. So I appreciate all the things that you guys have done, too. I am looking forward to being at the schools next week to welcome the students back. Hopefully, it won't be rainy this year. Last year, it was really super wet. So if it would not be rainy this year, that would be good, but I'm excited for the school year.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. I kind of need that rain, though. That's what people always say. They're like, we need that rain. So we talked about Technology Committee. I was fortunate enough to be asked by Mr. Willer from TPS Foundation to participate in the United for a Successful School Year. I saw Mrs. Bulley there. Mr. Tatum had stopped by as well. And so I was fortunate enough to get to participate in that. I also, it was last week, I met with Mrs. Ramirez Jennings with DCAC and Dr. Anderson to go over just kind of like goals for DCAC for the next year. And I'm pretty excited about that. We talked about possible work sessions, and they want to look a little bit more at engagement and the factors that play into engagement from parents and families, that kind of stuff. And so I look forward to that. We also went over meeting schedule and meetings, so hopefully we'll be getting our, I don't think that's come out yet, Dr. Gray, but we'll be getting our meeting and assignments soon enough so that we know when we're supposed to be at the D C AC meeting. I definitely enjoyed convocation. I've known Lane since he was a little, little kid. And bow tie Monday was a regular for Lane for as long as I've known him. And it was very special for me to be able to see him do such a good job up on stage. I know that right now, a lot of our students, especially our high school students, are doing various camps and getting ready. I know my oldest is currently at band camp, and Mr. Munoz has somebody probably at band camp right now as well as they gear up for marching season. And so I appreciate the support. And then we roll into meet the teacher nights and then roll into the first day of school. So there's a lot of momentum going. I heard about the, what are you pointing at, Dr. Boenbrich?
You donated a weekend doing how many?
I donated very little time, Dr. Boenbrich. Don't worry about me.
All week.
I can do sports physicals in my sleep, Dr. Boenbrich.
How many did you do?
It was, it was actually, Dr. Anderson and I talked about this. The this United for a Successful School Year was a little less attended than other ones for various factors. So I did a couple handfuls of sports physicals, and I had the help of.
Tired nurse from.
Yeah, she was a nurse aide from Highland Park High School, Robin. And she made my job a thousand times easier, and she gave me all the dirt, too. So it was a good time. So yeah, that 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 I enjoy that. But I heard the want for retreat, and so I think I think that does make sense looking at digging into the needs assessment a little bit more and just what are the elements? And roping in Dr. Kip to get some kind of the elements of growth versus assessment. I also think during our two-on-one, today, we enjoyed a two-on-two meeting with Ms. Stranethan. We talked about the future work sessions, the board work sessions. And I think maybe looking at the absenteeism, we had talked about that maybe as a possibility because that mobility, as Dr. Kip alluded to, and some of those things. And what 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 is chronic absenteeism? So I think that could be useful. We talked about that for maybe in September for a future work session. So obviously, this time of year is busy with back to school, but finding a time in the nearest future to have a retreat and delve into that. So I will follow up with Mrs. Lister, and she'll help me with figuring out some dates that we can then push out and vote on and decide on. And I think that's all I have. And so if there's nothing else, we just need to adjourn.
Mr. President, I move the meeting adjourned.
In a second. Mr. Tatum. And then everybody in favor raised their right hand, but not their left. Dr. Okay, it's unanimous.